Calling the meeting of the Carbon County Board of Commissioners to order with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather today. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you will clearly show us how to conduct our work. While it is foolish to worry about tomorrow, it's wise to prepare our thoughts and emotions for the next day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held October 5th, 2023.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz.
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business? None at this time.
Next item, we have proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz.
Yes.
I'll read it into the record. Whereas Women's Center was founded by a group of volunteers to assess the needs of area women, provide support in the form of peer counseling, and conduct community education programs about issues of importance to women. And whereas, in 1977, the Women's Center Task Force received a CEDAS special project grant to develop a full-time domestic violence program. And whereas, in April 1978, the task force established the first shelter in northeastern Pennsylvania for battered women and their children. And whereas, the task force was incorporated as Domestic Violence Service Center in June 1978. And whereas, the first Victims of Crime Act grant was received in 1986 through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And whereas, during the fiscal year 2000-2001, the task force completed work on a social service protocol to assist human service providers with routine screening of their clients and consumers and appropriate referral of those who are victims. And whereas, the purpose of the Domestic Violence Service Center is to work toward the elimination of domestic violence. And whereas, this October, the Domestic Violence Service Center will observe 47 years of service to the community. Now, therefore, the commissioners of Carbon County hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and honor and commend the Domestic Violence Service Center for its contribution to the residents of Carbon County, adopted by the Carbon County Board of Commissioners this 12th day of October 2023.
Brianna, would you like to give a couple of comments?
Sure. First, thank you so much for having me today. I am the outreach supervisor at the Domestic Violence Service Center. Just a little bit about who we are, what we do. We are a nonprofit agency. Everything is free of charge and confidential. So if you are currently experiencing domestic violence or know of somebody that is, please call our 24-hour hotline, 570-823-7312. Again, everything is kept confidential. And a counselor advocate is available at all times, including nights, weekends, and holidays to answer that phone call.
Are you able to give us the extent of the issue in Carbon County?
As far as...
Domestic violence and how it is impacting our county directly?
Well, I can't say as far as the need goes. We see a lot more people coming to our agency in Luzerne County because of the access to transportation, the employment opportunities. So, and also too, trying to get the word out that we serve both counties. But that helps as far as, okay, well, I need transportation, I need employment, so let me call the closest county that offers those services to me.
Okay, got it. Does the media have any questions for her before she leaves?
What's your name, please?
Brianna.
Name?
B-R-I-A-N-N-A Schader S-C-H-A-B-D-E-R.
And Brianna, I mean you from the types of names.
Nice to meet you.
Piggybacking off Commissioner Lukasewicz's, do you know how many cases of domestic violence typically are handled in Carbon County?
I can't give you stats off the top of my head. I can say as far as one of our programs that we offer to Carbon County residents, where we will pay for their rental assistance for up to a year. We currently have eight participants in that program.
Thank you very much.
Is that rental assistance program new?
Yes. We've had it for, I want to say, about two years now. And so again, if anyone is interested in need of our services, they would call our 24-hour hotline and we can give them more information on that program.
And this one might be, you know, more obvious, but why is it so important to continue the work that you do?
I think we have to bring awareness to the effects of domestic violence. The community has to be aware of how it impacts one's life. It not only impacts their mental, but also like their financial. The abuser could be the main sole provider, and that could be the reason why that person chooses to stay in that relationship. So it's important to know that they have other options rather than just staying. There is an agency out there that can address their needs in order to safely get them out of that relationship.
What would you recommend to someone who's in that situation?
I would say you are not alone. Domestic violence does not discriminate. There is people of all walks of life, color, background, age, that have experienced domestic violence, and there is help out there. Again, free and confidential.
Did you, sorry, did you say that transportation is an issue for people in Carbon County?
Yes. And just because we serve both counties, as far as the bus transportation goes, Uber taxis, they're very, very limited on the transportation. And going back to if the abuser is the sole provider, they may not have a car, or they may not be allowed to have access to that car. Same thing with employment. They may not be able to work as a control tactic. So there are limited resources here, but we can step in, for example, that rental assistance program and assist them if they do want to remain in Carbon County.
Brianna, I would ask that you consider attending one of the Carbon County's Transportation Committee's meeting and bring this issue to them, because it may be something they could assist in, or at least it gives them an issue that we have not discussed in those committee meetings before. You know, how, we tend to talk about mental health, medical, and then general. But the access in regards to domestic violence and mitigating the impact, or ensuring that those individuals who may be abused do have access, that has not been an issue that we've discussed in that committee. So I think it would be worthwhile raising that awareness to the Transportation Committee.
Yes, absolutely. I would love to. Thank you.
And I just want to add to it, I know probably 99.9% is women, but I think the last report we got, I think there was a man that was abused. So it's actually like everybody thinks it's just for women. It's actually for any gender.
And I should state that, again, domestic violence does not discriminate. So as far as our services go, we can provide services to men, women, transgender. Again, we do not discriminate. But actually, now that you mention it, I want to say, a month ago or two months ago, we had two males in our emergency shelter.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
No, and you were afraid of us talking, and you were excellent. You have to come more often.
You scared me with your staff.
Oh yeah, you know what, here I go. We got the proclamation for you.
I don't know if we want to lock this.
I didn't know where to stand.
I don't know if you want to pitch rubber or anything. You can get around.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your pleasure.
I was so nervous. Thank you. Thank you for being so nice.
Oh, sorry. Before you go, one more question.
Yes.
So Christine did mention transportation. Is there like an easy fix in or anything? There should be another route, or should there be a program like to get to them specifically?
We can only help so much. So we do provide Uber cards, we provide gas cards. But again, if somebody doesn't have access to a vehicle, what good is that gas card? And please excuse me, I'm not too familiar with the bus routes here. So maybe having additional bus routes, or even if there is a county program that can assist with either vehicle repairs or some kind of program that they can work towards saving up for a vehicle. I would like to see something like that. I think that might be beneficial.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next item, the report of executive sessions, House.
Never known.
Department reports, the budget transfers.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
There were no supplemental appropriations? Expenditures, approval of payroll check numbers 75565 through 75577, and direct deposit check numbers 6057778 through 6058203 for the payroll paid through the payroll fund checking account for all county funds totaling $664,987.25. This is the payroll dated October 6th, 2023.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Approval of check numbers 238977 through 239190 for expenditures through the general fund clearing account totaling $792,465.04.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
The treasurer's report.
Move to accept. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Would you like me to bring this up?
Okay. The county depository. For approval, requests from the county treasurer for renewal of the county depository. Mockchuck Trust Company FHLB letter of credit as collateral of county deposits as allowed by Act 72. This collateral will be updated annually.
Move to approve on discussion then after this.
Okay, second.
Kevin, you want to explain that to us for the public, really? Just a little bit?
Sure. It's a $15 million letter of credit from the bank guaranteeing that, it assures that the seller, that the payments will be made. The buyer must prove to the bank that they have enough assets or sufficient line of credit to pay before the bank will guarantee payments to the seller.
Could you give an example where that comes into play for us? I would just ask if you could maybe follow up with us. Yeah, because I did a little research on it, but I'm not totally understanding of it. So just to further understand, I was trying to look at an example where it came into play. Is it always, or is it something that's always there supporting what we do?
That's always there, just in case.
Right, yeah, okay.
But I could check.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Okay, may I pull the word?
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Absolutely.
A new account for ratification. Ratify the authorization to the county treasurer to open the Fund 2161 demolition fund.
Move to ratify. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Personnel report for county departments.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and rural offices.
Motion acknowledged. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed copies will be made available to the press upon request. A bid award, the CDBG project. For approval, recommendation was received from the Director of Planning and Development to award the contract for the Community Development Block Grant bid opening on September 28th, 2023 for Lee Heighton Borough Public Facilities Roof Replacement, Lee Heighton Senior Center, fiscal year 2019, to H&amp;P Construction of Coltmont, Pennsylvania at the bid amount of $70,440.60.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
For children and youth for approval and execution, the fiscal year 2023-2024, purchase of service agreements with National Mentor Healthcare LLC, doing business as Pennsylvania Mentor Brumal, Pennsylvania, United Children Homes Incorporated, West Hazelton, Pennsylvania, as per the attached rates.
Move to approve next. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Communications 911. For approval and execution, the Third Amendment to the agreement with Two Way Mobile Communications Incorporated of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, to maintain and operate the Northeast Core, NICOR phone system and ESI net services for the region. Maintenance includes hardware and software support and onsite services. The term of the agreement is January 1, 2024, through December 31st, 2024. Maintenance at a cost of $44,447.10. ESI net maintenance cost $19,710.63 for a total of $64,157.73 funded through the statewide interconnectivity grant CoStars #12-E22-241. This is an increase of $2,025.20.
Move to approve next. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Planning and development, CDBG 2023 application for approval. The fiscal year 2023 CDBG projects for entitlement and non-entitlement communities as per the attached list.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
For approval and adoption, the fiscal year 2023 CDBG resolution number 23-034.
Move to adopt the resolution. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
The solicitor's report.
Thank you. Seeking a...
Seeking a motion for ratification of a lease agreement with Sergeant Holdings LLC of Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania, for the rental of a portion of the first floor of the property located at 410 Center Avenue in Jim Thorpe, for the lease period commencing October 11, 12, 18, 19, 25, 26, and terminating on October 27th, 2023, at a cost of $100 per day for a total cost of $700.
Move to ratify. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
And under the Tax Claim Bureau, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a revision to the agreement dated May 3rd, 2018, with Infocom Corporation of Evansburg, Pennsylvania, to utilize Infocom Corporation to host the Tax Claim Bureau's software system at a monthly fee of $1,129.91, which is an increase of $53.81, VPN fee of $157.50, an increase of $57.50, and e-archives at $300, which is an increase of $6.
Motion approved. Excuse me. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Yes.
Nothing further for the solicitor's report.
Any further business?
None at this time.
Commissioners' reports, Mr. Honor?
None at this time.
Mr. Lucasevich?
Meeting adjourned. We do have a new media person here today, but she's not new.
I am not new.
Okay, you're back after years of being away. How's that? Haley, do you have any questions? Now, this is if you're going to continue to come. If you're going to continue to come, we'll put you first. But if not, you have to wait the last. No, go ahead.
I'm not here in person. I'm always watching.
So do you have any questions?
I do want to ask if there's going to be a commissioners' debate?
Yes, there is.
When's that?
The 30th at 7 o'clock at the American Legion in Lee Heitton.
Just curious if you guys have anything to say about this upcoming election, how it's going in the office? Okay, yeah.
I'll make my comments at the debate. How's that?
Yes.
I'll make mine on social media. Follow the right team for commissioners.
All right.
Amy.
Haley, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thanks.
Good morning. With regards to demolition fund that was set up, is that for the recorder?
Yeah, the recorder dues at $15. And it should, I think that's going to come in effect by January. Yeah, January 1st, that'll come into effect.
With regards to the lease agreement with Sergeant Holdings, is that due to the elevator being out? Is that why it's happening?
Well, you must be psychic.
Well, we really, we really hoped it was going to be part of the county employees' fitness program, where we were renting the gym for basketball during lunchtime, but the reality is the elevator, and, you know, ensuring access to the tax appeals.
So let's talk about the elevator then, since you guys, I know, just had all those repairs on it, and now it's down again.
Well, it's some, I think, what it is, I think there's a panel that was not replaced, like a circuit board. And I think they found a circuit board that they can fix it with, but to it get shipped there. In fact, I think it was supposed to be here last Friday, and it still wasn't here yet. And that's like the thing, and I think that's, I think that's one of the things that we have to look for in the future. Like we have a lot of the, like the piston was replaced and everything, and, you know, rollers. But the circuit boards have not. So I think that's something that we're going to have to look to in the future to get it. I mean, that's all it is, is new circuit boards. So we're going to have to try to update that, because they're probably going to be obsolete in another year or two.
Yeah, so it's getting close, unfortunately, to the end of its life. Now, you can go to St. Mark's Church just down the road here, and a 100-year-old elevator. But this modern one, what, 40, 50 years old, I think 1971-72 probably, isn't going to last half as long.
We'll have to see if we can get a crank on this one.
Right.
That's normal with appliances and everything.
Right, right, yeah.
Makes sense. And can you just refresh my memory with regards to CDBG entitlement communities? What the cutoff is for, because I know Lancer before, the last census, they were too low. So now that I see them on here, I was wondering what the, what the census, what their requirements are.
Yeah, watch the talk the day.
Yeah, I don't know for sure. No, I couldn't answer that.
Okay. And may I have a copy of the proclamation that Karen opened there?
Okay, question on the construction. Do we have a date yet for when the inside will begin?
November 13th. I'm putting that out there because that's what I was told, November 13th.
As of yesterday.
As of yesterday. Now, today might be different, but November 13th.
And then, just in response to what she was saying about transportation being an issue, do you guys have any ideas of how to, you know, go about fixing that or making a program of some sort?
Well, I was going to say, I'm going to go in defense of Lant and Carbon Transit. I think it does an excellent job of providing service in Carbon County. The problem is, just like domestic awareness of, or domestic abuse awareness, is awareness of what Carbon Transit provides, because it has great flexibility in its services. Tends to focus, of course, more internal to the county, but it is an effective means of transportation based upon the resources and funds that we have available to support it. There's no question. It doesn't mean it's covering all the gaps, and she may have identified one that, you know, that transportation committee just wasn't aware of, and may be able to make some type of modifications to address some of the issues. But again, I think awareness to that committee is going to help find the gaps that maybe we didn't foresee before, did not see before in regards to this issue.
So then what do you think is a good, like, next step forward?
I think Brianna should talk to the Transportation Committee and expose to them the issue that she's seeing from a domestic violence perspective to see if there is something that they might be able to do, leveraging our existing transportation system. Or if not, coming up with new initiatives that we may be able to use to mitigate or to assist in ensuring that individuals have whatever access is needed, be it to the service, be it to employment, or whatever the case may be. I do? All right. Go to lunch, everybody.